Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise, uh, to transfer from available funds a sum of $65,000 to pay for a complete revision of the town zoning bylaws or take any other action thereon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 30. Finance Committee is proposing a recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Care to speak to the article, please?
Sure. Um, so I will cover sort of the Finance Committee side and then I would ask Mr. Seeley to, um, help with some of the specifics, but what this article would do is transfer from undesignedated funds or free cash, um, the $65,000 to, um, pay for council to completely revise our zoning bylaws. Um, you've seen a lot of different changes and proposals made to amend the zoning bylaws if you've been coming to town meetings and special town meetings for a while. Um, so we asked Mr. Seeley to look into the cost to, um, complete a complete recodification. Rather than taking little bites here and there and fixing things and creating inconsistencies in other places when we make changes in one place, we wanted to have someone take a full-scale look at it and make wholesale changes at once. And we also understand that asking volunteer and elected committees to do that in addition to all their other work would be, um, a large ask and a very large request. Um, so, uh, we asked Mr. Seeley to find out the estimate and this would get us, I believe, through to having a potential proposal for a upcoming town meeting in future years, but Mr. Seeley, I think, would have more, um, of the specifics than I would.
And the idea would be, in fact, be having the playing board, zoning board of appeals, board of selectmen, other departments, there would be citizen involvement in all this, is to try to aim to bring something back to town meeting in May of 2021. How much of it needs to be revised? That's what we'd be working with land use council about. Major parts of the town's zoning bylaws were put in place back in the sixties and eighties. There really has not been a significant revision since that time. We've had, you know, certain subjects, yes, we've had, you know, but even then, some of those subject areas, we haven't updated for, let's say, 20 years. And how the courts have ruled and even dealing with technology has changed how our zoning should be working. Nothing obviously gets approved through this unless it goes to town meeting. Two-thirds vote still applies. The idea is to bring something back that can modernize a significant part of our zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Any questions?
To the mic.
Go to the mic.
Yes, please. Can I go to the mic? Gordon Andrews, 688 Plymouth Street. Uh, my question is, is there an estimate? And, um, who came up with the estimate for the revision? And has that gone out to anybody except for, uh, land use council? And if we're going to do this, are we going to solicit the public to get their input and find out what's going on rather than a selected few trying to make changes with the bylaws?
Mr. Moderator, just to answer a couple of those questions, I think I specifically mentioned just about a half a minute ago that we would have citizen involvement in this process specifically. As far as the estimate itself, yes, we got the estimate from land use council. If the board of selectmen, uh, and obviously it's the Finance Committee's article, it's going to probably be run through somebody, some other board or committee other than the Finance Committee, but if the board of selectmen felt it was prudent, in fact, to go out to bid, um, to get, you know, in essence, get requested proposals and proposals from law firms, including our land use council, then that would be the board's judgment.
Mr. Seeley? Yes? Middle?
Hi. Tom Manning, 10 Sycamore Drive. I'm looking at this thirty, Article 30, and, uh, the changing of the town's bylaws. And I'm wondering, does that have anything to do with what's going to be coming later on in the book? Because some of the articles were written out, you know, lines were written through them, which, which involve zoning bylaws. And I'm just curious, does one have anything to do with the other? Uh, I'm looking at Article 30, but I'm looking a little further and I'm looking at Article 48. And I'm wondering, you want to make changes to the town's bylaws, but over here, we were supposed to discuss these issues and all of a sudden they're written out. And I'd like to have, you know, an explanation as to why.
Sure. Let me see if I can get an answer for you. I, I have a sense of what the answer is, but, uh...
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I know that Boris Sluckman announced that in earlier Boris Sluckman meeting, uh, tonight, you know, a couple of hours ago, uh, several hours ago now, that the board's intent on Article 48 is to move to pass over 48, to bring, to have further conversations specifically about the multifamily, uh, sections of the zoning bylaw, including the Boris Sluckman, zoning board, planning board, board of health, anybody else, and again, citizen involvement in that process.
I understand, but the majority, quite a few people came up, showed up tonight, very concerned about the multiple family issues, and they're zapped out. We're talking about bylaw changes and they're zapped out. And this is what brought us, this brought a lot of people here because we're really afraid about having housing projects or whatever built within the town lines.
Yeah, I think there are two different things here. The, the changes that are being proposed in this article are in the future, not connected to the article you're referencing.
Yeah, but it's hard to, it's hard to not to separate them when we're talking about bylaw changes and $65,000 to complete, a complete change of the bylaws. Maybe they won't even look anywhere similar to what we have right now. And then, and then all of a sudden, we come here, a very many of us concerned about these large dwellings that they've been talking about building, not just in this town, but many other towns too. And they're getting ready to, and we're, we're concerned that these developments are going to be forced on the town and the townspeople. And you can say what you want about the Article 30, that's fine, you're going to change that. But we had a major issue here as far as zoning bylaws, and to tell us that there's no correlation between what's on Article 30 and what's in 48, it's, it's, I think it's a stretch.
They both refer to the zoning and the reality here is, again, this is, still has to come, whatever revisions, as I understand it, were just stated, still has to come before the town to be voted.
Oh, yes.
Okay? So that, I mean, and, and that's, not that they're not both related to zoning, they are, but one is related to future revision and, and something that has to be voted by the town, whereas Article 48 is something we're going to be addressing tonight, either to pass over or to act.
So we can expect in the future, full disclosure, there won't be anything in town meeting, selectmen won't be sitting down and discussing this, this, uh, issue in private, this will be for everyone in the town to listen in and discuss who owns the land, where these projects are going to be built, who bought the land recently? You know, people with deep pockets have been waiting for something like this because we have the, uh, uh, what do you call it? The commuter rail, and that brings, uh, development, especially housing development. We got a lot of dead land in this town that, that very easily, very easily can be changed, the laws can be changed for multiple development. And who owns that? We want to know who owns that land? When was it purchased? Where did the money come from with that purchase? Who are the partners in that development? We want to know all these issues and for that to be, for that to be on the record, we need a commitment from this board that tells us they will not issue any orders in secret, that they will have open hearings in full disclosure, or maybe not.
Yeah, I'm not aware that this town operates in that fashion. I know we have bylaws, we have procedures, and I would encourage you to attend any of the public meetings that are available so that you can have your concerns before it.
Sir, I, I listen to your town meetings, and you don't discuss who owns the project and when they, when they were purchased? You're not, you're not interested in that because the purchase has been completed. You don't know who the investors are? You don't know, very few. You have, from the very beginning, you have to, you have to demand full disclosure when you're going to change these laws, when you're going to have a major development where somebody's going to make multiple millions of dollars in this town, we should know who they are, who's going to control the projects, where the money's coming from, because deep pockets mean corruption. And we, and you say, oh, it's a clean party?
Thank you.
Well, it won't be clean anymore.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Sir?
One in the back.
Not in the back. In the back.
This is Amy Tru, uh, 10 Hillside Ave. I would like to know how much we spent this year on, um, these bylaw changes that are in our town warrant.
See if we can find an answer for that. Not sure we can.
Can I have it from somebody like the accountant or a selectman?
No, because we did not bring copies of all the bills of all the departments for every single expenditure the town has encouraged.
Do we have an estimate, Sandy?
No.
There was meetings just so that the town knows this year with, um, very few people in the selectmen's room with town land use council. And those meetings weren't broadcast to all of you, but they did try to make these changes. And Tom Millis, can I ask you a question, please? At the selectmen's meeting?
Ms. Tru, Ms. Tru.
Uh, I'll ask it through you, Dennis.
You need to direct your questions to me.
Dennis, sorry, Ms., Dennis, to, to Tom, can you ask him what he said about the, uh, bylaw changes and how he felt about them at the selectmen's meeting at 6:15 in the multipurpose room tonight?
I, I, I don't think I'm going to do that.
Why?
Here's why, because I don't see how it relates to Article 30.
Because he stated, and so I'll just say it, he stated that he didn't like how they were. And I could tell you that I would have, I would absolutely agree with that because it doesn't change a lot of definitions. There's, uh, and, so basically, we wasted a lot of money this year on bylaw changes, and now we're asking that same law firm for a estimate again on changing all of our bylaws? I don't think the town of Halifax asked for our bylaws to be changed. So why is $65,000 up here to change our bylaws? And I think that gentleman, 10 Sycamore, just said the same sentiment.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator from the Finance Committee in response? Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
Dennis, Dennis.
Where am I looking?
Finance Committee.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I want to emphasize that this motion was brought by the Finance Committee in part in a reaction to us, um, being asked to provide recommendations, um, at least this long, the last several years that I've been on the Finance Committee, on various zoning bylaw changes. And having personally attended some of the meetings with the planning board and board of selectmen in which some of the, um, previous bylaws were discussed, there seemed to be a lot of, um, confusion, a lot of sort of misunderstanding, and that's not to blame anyone, that's because everyone that's working on it is volunteering their time and their effort and their energy, and that when we only revise one part of something, it's naturally going to create and generate inconsistencies in other parts that we're going to have to turn to later, right? And we won't find those unless there's a problem, and then we'll have to wait and do this all again. So this is why the Finance Committee, independently of all of this, asked for Mr. Seeley to go out to land use council and get an estimate on how much it would cost for a complete recodification so that we could have, especially with everything going on, changes in marijuana, um, legislation at the state level, et cetera, et cetera, that this might be a good time to just wholesale provide a revision of the bylaws and not, again, place an undue burden on volunteer and elected committees that, you know, may not have the time in addition to their other duties to come, uh, to complete a complete revision. Um, and I, I just want to emphasize again, this was the Finance Committee acting in an advisory capacity, trying to do what's best for the town. Um, and what we thought was best for the town was to at least explore this idea of having a complete revision, and then when we got the estimate and saw what it entailed, we did unanimously recommend.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Deb Winowitz, 60 Sycamore. I'm in favor of this article going from page one to the very end and straightening it out once and for all. Um, and I think it should be done by a land use attorney, not just people who think they know and doing bits and pieces. But, Mr. Moderator, I also want to say, on this article, we went off in a total different tangent, Article 48, all over the place, and I think we really need to stick to the articles that hand, and if you have a gathering, please use it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
Step to, step to the mic.
And finally. Yes, ma'am.
Deb Tinkham, 88 Paradise Lane. Um, I, I appreciated the answer that the Finance Committee gave of why they brought this whole way, but is there any feedback or is there any votes from planning and zoning?
I'll see if I can get an answer for you, ma'am. Any response from the planning or zoning?
Ellen Diaz, Planning Board, I would, in speaking for myself and probably with the board, they would welcome the opportunity to have council, um, go through the bylaws. They are quite a mess, and I personally would support the article for the $65,000.
Understood. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator?
Hang on one second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hang on one second, Ms. Tinkham. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Gainer?
Uh, yes, as, uh, from the zoning board of appeals, uh, there were years ago that we sat down and tried to, uh, work diligently in Brockton with their, uh, planning council to try to, uh, eliminate some of the ambiguities in, in the zoning, but I do think I agree with Mr. Diaz that, uh, it does take an, an effort more than just volunteers sitting down and it takes experts, legal experts, to, to do it correctly and would probably avoid an awful lot of the lawsuits and, and the other miscommunications between everybody and misunderstandings if they were in fact clarified. So I do support, uh, the $65,000 to, to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My follow-up question is, how did both of those boards vote? Did they vote on this article at all?
I'm sorry, would you ask that again because I missed that?
Were, were the individual boards, zoning and planning board, did they actually take a vote on this particular article?
Yeah, I don't think that, I heard that that was the case. Is that, that's not the case, correct? There was no vote by the planning or zoning board on this article, I think is what being asked, in, in terms of a recommendation.
No, there was no, uh, this never made it to the planning board hearings.
Thank you.
The same with the zoning board, uh, we did not take a vote on, uh, on this article.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yes, sir, we have, we have one other question from here.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Gainer.
I think there's a concern, and I'm not sure how to address. I think the idea of sorting things out and making them make sense, uh, if we are keeping to the same tone that we've had in, in the town, I think that's probably good. But I also sense from other speakers and other things I've heard, a certain distrust of, um, those who are interested in doing, um, maybe fairly large multifamily, um, buildings. I'm not, I'm not personally against all multifamily, um, but, but there's a lot that I wouldn't like also, and so I'm fearful, or hear from other people perhaps, uh, a concern that if we're going to do this grand re-zoning, who in the end is going to be making decisions about what kind of zoning we end up with? And that's essentially the question I have, or the concern.
Not sure we can get an answer other than...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Ultimately, any changes in the zoning bylaw are made by the town's voters here at town meeting or subsequent town meetings. Not by the playing board, not by the ZVA, not by town council, land use councils, selectmen, it's all, the changes in the bylaws go to the town meeting, they're voted on by the town's voters.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom Manning, 10 Sycamore Drive. I don't personally think that $65,000 is a lot of money to do that job. My, my problem was connecting a couple of the pages to this particular, uh, uh, article. I think also, I mentioned about corruption, and I don't want you to think I was thinking you were corrupt. I was thinking of the possibilities of the, of the, of the possibility of making very large amounts of money, that usually brings corruption, uh, especially to a new town like Halifax where we don't have those kind of developments here. And, um, I just think that, uh, maybe, maybe we should, maybe table this for another time because I think there's, uh, there's some rumblings about this one here, and I think we can deal with this the next time around. It doesn't look like if we postpone it for a couple of months or whatever, it's going to really make much of a difference.
Yeah, I, I think as the article has already been moved and seconded, we're required to act on it.
Well, I don't know.
Well, that's, that's what I'm telling you.
Then let's vote it down and start all over.
Well, I appreciate your, your position.
Mr. Moderator? I just want to comment that I don't think anybody's talking about a complete overhaul in terms of throwing it all out and starting it all over again. I think a lot of it is looking at what we've got, knowing the problems that we've had. We've got language that conflicts, we've got definitions that are awkward, um, we've had laws passed that we're in conflict with, there's a lot of cleaning up involved in this process, and that's where litigation comes in. We've been kicking this can down the road. We tried to do it in-house. We just can't get enough people to dedicate enough time. It's, it's just not in the cards anymore. Everybody's busy, everybody's got commitments. It's an attempt, and I applaud the Finance Committee taking the lead on this, to, to try to clean this up and, and take a look at it in total and see where we need to address things. A lot of things are still out of our control. The gentleman alluded to earlier about being forced to take on multifamilies. That isn't necessar, that isn't the town. The town, all multifamilies have parameters and require a special permit from the zoning board of appeal. It's all an open hearing. A lot of things, for instance, 40B projects are totally state mandated, very much out of our control. That's a problem. The legislature has indicated that they want to do these things, that's out of our control. We can't do much about that, but we can clean up our own language, and, and I think it's time. I think it's time we started.
Okay. Just to let everyone know, we've got about a dozen articles and we're going to try to get through them, so if you've got anything new to add, then please do so, and let's try to move this forward. Thank you.
Joanne Andrews, 688 Plymouth Street, Halifax. I've gone to quite a few planning board meetings and zoning board meetings, and the current land use attorney doesn't always recall her decisions from one board meeting to the next, and I would suggest that we put this out to bid if we're going to do something.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Gainer, any indication, more discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, we do have one.
668 Plymouth Street, Kimberly King. I support this article, um, and the money that they're asking for, um, simply because many of our volunteers in town have a conflict of interest when it comes to certain things within our bylaw, and I think that that would help eliminate a lot of the concerns that the residents here in town have. And I also agree that it should go out to bid.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else here? All right. I'd like to move Article 30. All those in favor of Article 30, please signify by raising your green cards up. All those who are opposed? Mr. Gainer?
It passes.
Article 30 passes. Next article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Request with count?
I'm sorry. Who's asking? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Or...
Secretary!
Oh, what are you...
I'm requesting a count.
I'm sorry, you're asking for a count?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm fine with that. Let's do a standing, uh, standing count. Rise to a point of order?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
David Macio, 1610th Ave. Can we just one last time repeat what this is needed for so the people understand that they're voting correctly?
I, I'm pretty sure it's been read fairly clearly.
It's, it's for additional fees that we need to put out of pocket to change rules that were put in place for multifamilies.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's...
I'm just trying to reiterate, I want to make sure everybody's understanding.
Mr. Macio, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think people understand. I would give them more credit.
Okay. I think people should really understand.
Thank you.
Does everybody understand?
Mr. Macio!
Not everybody understands, Mr. Moderator, not everybody understands.
Mr. Macio, in the middle of a count, please. Thank you. All those who are in favor of Article 30 as written and explained, please signify by raising your green card high, please, so that it can be properly counted. All those who are opposed to Article 30, please raise your red cards high. Mr. Gainer?
The article passes 20 in favor, three opposed.
Vote is 64 in favor, 41. Article 30 passes.
Article 48?
Article 48.
You're going to move to pass over?
It's been moved to pass over Article 48.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 48. That means taking no action on Article 48. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 48 being passed over?
Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends pass over.
Finance Committee recommends?
Planning Board, Dennis.
And the Planning Board, Dennis.
Oh, I'm sorry, Planning Board?
Ellen Deas, Planning Board. The Planning Board recommends passing over.
Passing over Article 48, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, there was no vote?
I'm sorry, again? Where did I hear?
Mr. Moderator, was there a vote of the Planning Board?
Was, was there a vote, sir?
Mr. Moderator, the selectman a few hours ago had a vote to pass over this article and that information was relayed on to me. So obviously, the Planning Board has not met.
So then there's no recommendation?
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're being asked to pass over Article 48, taking no action thereon. It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, no recommendation. Any discussion? All those who are, Mr. Gainer, any indication of discussion in your room? I'm sorry, almost forgot you guys.
No, sir, no indication of discussion.
All of those who are in favor of passing over Article 48, please signify by raising your cards, green cards. All of those who are opposed to passing over Article 48. Mr. Gainer?
Passes unanimously in favor.
Article 48 is passed over.
Article 35.
Article 35?
35.
Article 35.
I'll move it. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $13,000 from undesignated fund balance for insulation and a vapor barrier in the old section of the town barn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 35. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Speaking to the article?
Mr. Gainer, this is the Municipal School and Building Committee.
Yes, it's been an ongoing problem over there, the amount of heat loss and whatnot due to the wear and tear, the normal wear and tear in construction over the years. So it was a necessary repair over, over there at the Highway Department.
Any questions, any need for discussion? Mr. Gainer, any need for discussion there?
Negative, no indication.
Okay, all of those who are in favor of passing Article 35, please signify by saying, raising your green cards high. You're already ahead of me, I look up and you're already done it. Thank you, all of those who are opposed to Article 35, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gainer?
Passes unanimously in favor.
Article 35 passes.
Article 27.
Article 27.
I move that the town passes over Article 27.
Second.
It's been recommended that we pass over Article 27. Need a second?
What's seconded?
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 27, to take no action thereon. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on passing over Article 27?
Finance Committee recommends pass over.
Finance Committee recommends passing over Article 27. Need for discussion? Mr. Gainer, any need for dis- any indication of discussion there?
Negative, no indication.
All of those who are in favor of passing over Article 27, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. Any who are opposed to passing over Article 27, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gainer?
Unanimous in favor of passing over.
Article 27 is passed over. Next article.
Article 12.
I'm sorry, you should-
Article 12.
Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate $2,000 to fund the provisions of the collecting, collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2021 between Fire Chief Jason Viveras and the Town of Halifax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 12. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, I think everybody here would agree that Chief Viveras does a great job and this was the agreement that we came to with him.
Any need for discussion? Mr. Gainer, any indication of discussion?
Negative, no indication of discussion.
All of those in favor of passing Article 12, signify by raising your green cards high, please. Thank you, all of those who oppose, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gainer?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 12 passes. Next article.
Article 21.
Article 21. Motion on Article 21?
Mr. Moderator? I moved that the excuse me. I'm sorry, did you say 21?
Yep.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $20,000 to purchase or upgrade the existing inventory of portable radios and cruiser radios to be digitally compatible. The cost will include eight portables to be upgraded to P25 capability, two APX 4500 to complete all vehicles to digitally compatible, and a bag of five digital compatible spare portables to be used by reserve and special police officers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 21. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Speaking to the article?
Chief.
Chief, thank you.
The purpose of this article is to upgrade eight portable radios to P25 capability. Purchase two for APX 4500 for the cruisers. So then all our radios and the cruisers will be digitally compatible. And then to purchase, like Mr. Garrett said, five digital compatible spare portables. This equipment will not be replacing any existing equipment. The article is for upgrading current equipment and purchasing new equipment. The town has all the hardware to switch over to digital at the water tower, which was purchased through a grant when we lost our communications and went to regional dispatch. The repeater is well over $30,000, it's not being utilized. It's, it's ready to go. So a lot of departments in the area have all gone digital. If this trend keeps going, we'll not be able to communicate with some of the neighboring towns. Like, for example, like we had the incident the other night in Kingston. If they call for help and they're in digital and we're not, we can't respond. Or we won't, we won't be able to hear their transmissions. So this basically upgrades eight radios, which we already have, to P25. Purchases two APXs, radios for the cruisers. And then to purchase the five APXs, 4000s for the spares.
Thank you, chief. Questions? Mr. Gainer, any indication, discussion?
Uh, no indication to discuss.
Okay, seeing none here, all those who are in favor of Article 21, please signify by raising your green cards high. Thank you, any who are opposed, please raise your red cards to signify you oppose. Mr. Gainer?
Passes unanimously in favor.
Article 21 passes, next article.
Article 19.
Article 19.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $600,000 to purchase and equip a fire engine for the town, for the, for the Halifax Fire Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 19. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, I'd ask that Chief Viveras begin his one-hour presentation on the firefight engine purchase now.
We'll try, we'll try to, we'll try to keep it short. Jason Viveras is the fire chief. What we're proposing is to replace the 1996 KME pumper. It's approximately 25 years old and has lived out its life expectancy. The NFPA standards call for the vehicle's replacement. It most recently failed a pump test when we sent it out to be tested. And it's prone to unexpected breakdowns. Like any vehicle that's 25 years old and has been on New England roads, we have unexpected electrical problems, corrosion issues with this vehicle. And this will end our five-year capital plan that we had several years ago. If you recall, we replaced a tower truck with a grant. Two years ago, we asked for $100,000 to upgrade Engine 1, which is a 2007. And sticking to the NFPA standards, the 2007 engine will become our reserve piece. Be good in that capacity because we upgraded it for 10 years and this will be our primary, our primary vehicle. Delivery time can take up to 18 months from the time we order it. We're seeing annual increases if it was postponed between, roughly between 2.5% and 5%. The cost, we're asking for $600,000 to purchase and equip. We certainly do not want, we're not looking for a Cadillac model. I asked a few of the vendors that we're working with to just let me know what some of the neighbor, some of the most recent purchases in Massachusetts were. Pembroke just purchased two engines, $625,000. Belmont, $625,000. Marshfield, $643,000. And those were all bought roughly two years ago, they've just taken delivery now. So we expect a 5% increase, to see a 5% increase over those. So we've worked diligently to keep the spec as reasonable as possible and still have a vehicle that meets our needs.
Thank you, chief. Any need for discussion? Mr. Gainer?
Negative, no indication of discussion.
Yes, ma'am. You gotta be much closer and speak a-
I'm on Susan Hill, 54 Stonyware Road. My question is, if it takes 18 months to two years to be delivered, does the entire amount of the engine need to be paid for upfront? Or can it be a 60/40 and split it between two fiscal years?
See if we can find the answer to that question, chief.
I believe we have to appropriate the money before we can enter into a contract with any, any type of vendor. Maybe Charlie can clarify that?
And the town accountant can confirm this if necessary. But yes, when we sign contracts for services and for goods, even as large, one good as a fire truck, the town accountant, for instance, needs to sign off on that contract. The town accountant needs to have verification that the money in fact has been appropriated to pay for that contract. The contract cannot be signed without that money being appropriated.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, sir?
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mount Pontiff. I hate to be that guy. The Halifax Fire Department saved my brother's life. But back when we got the platform truck a couple of years ago, we were told that that would take the place of the pumper truck and we wouldn't need a new pumper truck for a few years to come. And now we're being asked for a pumper truck. I mean, I, I, you know, we haven't had that truck that long and the chief did a great job on getting a grant to pay for that platform truck. But are we gonna get a grant for this one? Or what's going on here?
So the, the tower truck is roughly, I believe it's coming up on five years old. It's totally different than a frontline engine. We carry all of our heavy rescue equipment on the frontline engine. The tower truck is not set up for that. So we still need two frontline engines. It did postpone the, we had looked at replacing Engine 2 earlier. The tower truck did postpone that. Engine 1, which is the 2007, was purchased on a, off of a FEMA grant. Chief Benjamina at the time obtained the money for that. The tower truck, except for the town's match, was also paid for for a FEMA grant. Because of the age of those apparatus, we wouldn't be eligible for another one. They're, they're very rare to begin with. Less than 1% of all grant applications nationwide receive consideration and Halifax has been lucky to purchase two of them. Based on all the NFPA standards, the 1996 KME is due to be replaced. After 10 years, a vehicle is supposed to be rehabbed and then put into reserve status. That's why last year I rehabbed Engine 1 in anticipation of putting that vehicle into reserve status. We still do need a frontline pumper. If this request is granted, as I said, it will fulfill our five-year capital plan that we had put in place. And I can tell you that we, the Fire Department will not be back to town meeting for a vehicle for at least 10 years.
Thank you, chief.
In the back.
In the back, more, another question?
I just, David Macio, 1610th Ave. I got a couple of questions for the chief. So the pump truck-
Yeah, I, I know this sounds awkward, you need to ask-
All right, chief, the pump truck that we're, we're looking to get, right? It's gonna carry a certain amount of gallons in the tank and in the truck. It's a four-inch intake, four-inch discharge. This truck will support the ladder truck to pump out so the ladder truck can do what it's gotta do. I'm learning, okay? And I just recently visited a fire station where my cousin works in Plymouth and I could see what these things need and have to do. There's only so much gallons that these trucks will hold in order to supply the fire nozzles or the cannons in order to put people's $600,000 houses out that this truck will supply for that. That's what we're trying to replace is the old truck that the pump test has failed, meaning that the pump has no longer met the requirements that the Fire Department needs in order to put a fire out sufficiently. We could possibly have a fire failure, a failure of the pump truck and not be able to save a, a home or even a family's lives or something like that. So we're looking for a new pump truck to replace our old truck and make sure that we can sustain the homes. Sounds good to me.
Thank you, thank you.
Everything that Mr. Macio said was correct. When, when we have a fire, it's very common for us to use all three vehicles. Someone brought, brought up Oak Place earlier when they were talking about the rehab on that road. But one of the, we did have two significant fires on that road. And one of the problems that we have is the distance to a fire hydrant. So one of our pumpers gets tied up just being, it's called an inline pumping because we're 2,000 feet away from the next fire truck. So with the, the loss of water pressure, we need a pump in the middle to, to boost that pressure. So the town does need three pieces of fire apparatus.
Thanks, thanks, chief. Sir?
Hello, Tom Manning, 10 Sycamore Drive. $600,000, that's the rate. We have to accept it, we need it. We don't want, we don't want a junk on the road, you know? And I for one, I know what it's like to call the Fire Department, oh, no, no, excuse me, what it was like for my mother. Because three years ago, in 2017, the Fire Department ambulance picked me up and brought me to South Shore Hospital. I had septic and I was in septic shock and I was dying. And they got me to South Shore Hospital and they threw me on a helicopter and they got me to the Mass General Hospital and I'm here today. And the docs, the doctors mentioned, and the history, and the, some of them were doctors for 40 years and they never saw anybody come back. for 40 years, and they never saw anybody come back. So I guess I came back to haunt you guys. But I just wanted to let you know, the Fire Department, it needs the engine. Let's cut through the chase, let's cut through the crap, let's get them the fire truck that they need, and let's move on, and we're gonna get the hell out of here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Gaynor, any indication of further discussion?
Yes, just one question here.
Kimberly King, 66th Ave, Plymouth. I support this article, and I support this article because on February 7th, 2020, I had an 80-foot pine tree take out my second floor, push my whole entire house forward, and the branches were so large on this tree, they were out the front. That tree snapped and was hanging off the front of my roof. The last thing I want, when I'm trapped inside of my house in an emergency like that with my children and with my animals, is for the Fire Department to be broken down on 106. Pass the article, the families in this town matter.
Thank you. Other indication, Mr. Gaynor?
No, sir, no further indication.
Seeing none here, would ask all of those who are in favor of Article 19, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. Any who are opposed, please signify by raising your red card. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 19 passes.
Article 23.
Article 23. Yes, sir.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance to sum of $5,000 to purchase bullet-resistant vests for the officers of the Police Department, and set funds to be used in conjunction with any grants available to the Police Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 23, the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Speaking of these articles, chief?
Basically, this is a yearly request. We need to appropriate the $5,000, and then we get it back from the state through the, through the vest program. Halifax is a mandatory wear department, so we have to supply our officers with bulletproof, bulletproof, sorry, bullet-resistant vests, and so we have to, you know, put the money upfront, and the state reimburses us.
Thanks, chief. Any questions? Oh, you, you, you're not raising. Wait for that, wait for me, I know, you guys are ready, hang on, I just wanna make sure about this. Mr. Gaynor, any need for discussion?
No need for discussion here.
All those who are, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry, did I not ask the FinCon? I did. Didn't I?
FinCon recommends.
I did. All right. I could be losing my mind. How long is it for my term of office? Not too long, right? All right, all of those who are in favor of Article 23, please signify by raising your green cards high, for those of you who aren't already raising them. Thank you. Any who are opposed, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimous in favor.
Article 23 passes. Next article.
Oops, sorry.
Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, John Chavone, Board of Assessors, to see if the town will vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance to sum of $28,500 for the assessors' recertification account.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Moderator, could the previous speaker repeat the number?
Yes, could you repeat the number, 'cause I have a different one, too.
I'm sorry, $18,500.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass Article 25, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Your article, sir?
This is our annual request for monies for the recertification. It's done every three years. We split it up into three years, so that the town doesn't have to approve the money at one town meeting.
Thank you. Any indication of discussion, Mr. Gaynor, on your end?
Negative, no indication.
Seeing none here, all in favor of Article 25 passing, please signify by raising your green cards high. Thank you. Any opposed, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimous in favor.
Article 25 passes. Next article.
Article 32.
Article 32.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,500 from undesignated fund balance to support the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center for Domestic Violence Intervention and Prevention Service for its residents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 32, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Are you speaking to this article?
This is an organization that really is needed. Unfortunately, we do have domestic violence in our society, and the people who there are afraid and need help, and it's the people they go to for help.
Thank you. No indication of discussion here, Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion.
All those who are in favor of Article 32, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. All those who are opposed, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimous in favor.
Article 32 passes.
Article 51. 51.
Article 51.
I move Article 51 as printed. No, excuse me. There's an amendment. I'm gonna read it. Which is, this one, which is Section 1. I move the article as, with an amendment to Section 1. Notwithstanding the provisions of Section 5, Clause 40, 45th of Chapter 59 of the General Laws as appearing in the 2018 official edition, the Town of Halifax is hereby authorized to subject to taxation any solar-powered system or device which generates greater than .1 megawatts of electricity and which is capable of producing more than 125% of the annual electric energy needs of the real property upon which it is located and contiguous and non-contiguous real property of the owner of the system or device within the Town of Halifax. And Section 2, 3, and 4 as printed.
Article 51 has been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 51?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
I, I wanna start by saying that this does not affect anybody's rooftop solar.
Do you wanna move both of your mic? I know it's.
Oh.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I wanna start by mentioning that this does not affect anybody's typical rooftop solar installation. This is to try to provide for larger installations, various sites, it could be business, I mean, some I suppose could be residential, but it would be a, a very big site, and covers mostly your typical large installations that you see in the outskirts of town. We're trying to prepare for the future. It is a source of revenue, and it is a commercial enterprise. And if it is more than .1 megawatts of production, and it, in fact, is more than 125% of the use of the property, we think it should be taxed like any other income-producing.
Thank you. Any questions, need for discussion?
Will this be to, I'm sorry, Jamie Troop, outside.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm, so, will this get rid of the pilot program, and then you'll just remain in the?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily. Pilot is a different kind of animal altogether. That's a really large field. You're talking four, five, or better megawatts. You're talking a really large system.
So this, this would be more to get a tax off of their profits? Is that what it is?
That, that's part of it, but it also regulates other fields that aren't that big, that aren't subject to, say, a pilot agreement. And, and even with the pilot agreements now, there's legislation ongoing, even that whole thing is in flux. There's a lot of confusion with that. It's really complicated. I, I think the best thing I can do is stress that this isn't gonna involve anybody's rooftop unit, and I think that was a concern.
Will it be, on that, on that statement, say you have, like, an offsetting wall, one that goes up and down and moves in your yard, would it affect that?
It, it would have to be enormous to get even .1 megawatts.
Okay, so it has to do with the megawatts, okay? And then the only other problem that I keep trying to talk about is to make sure that even some of the funds that we get from solar farms are put aside just in case, because these are already labeled toxic. We're in real estate classes where lawyers are telling us that these solar panels are already toxic waste, so I want to make sure that the, say, for instance, in some of the solar farms that we have, that we'll have a way to get rid of them, because in 20 years, we're gonna have farms full of solar panels that are already, today, labeled toxic.
Just to allay some of your fears, in our negotiations for pilot agreements, decommissioning money is also included in that. So if the project went belly-up, for instance, or it became obsolete, there are funds available, either in cash or a bond, to provide for dismantling and just properly disposing of the equipment.
So they'll be held, like, by address, like, say, just River Street or Mont Ponce Street, they'll have a decommissioning account for us to be set up?
Yeah, there'll be a bond presented to the town for that purpose.
Okay. Do we have bonds in place for the solar fields that we already have?
I'm pretty sure the two that we have, we do have bonds, yeah, for decommissioning. It always becomes a point of contention when you're negotiating the pilot agreements, 'cause typically the developers always try to come up with a reason why they don't need to do it, but we've always held tough, real tough, and won't negotiate without a decommissioning bond or cash.
Okay. I hope that everybody holds still to that, 'cause in 20 years, we might have a big problem at our hands.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alan, step to the mic. Go to the mic.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Section 4, do we need to change that date? The effective date is passed, and I have this warrant which printed some time ago, so you might wanna talk about that.
It's 21, it says.
Is it 2021? Is it 2021?
It's, it, that's how it's written in my book.
Oh, I'm, I'm reading the book.
Oh, that might be, this is the amendment, well, maybe I didn't bring it.
They updated.
It needed to be updated, so we made it July 21. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for looking at it. Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion?
Negative, no indication of discussion.
All those who are in favor of passing Article 51, please signify by raising your green cards high. Thank you. All those who are opposed, please raise your red cards high. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 51 passes.
Article 31.
Article 31.
That's right.
Article 31.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town transfer for the sum of $3,500 from undesignated fund balance to support South Coastal County's Legal Services Incorporated, continued free legal services in civil matters to elders and low-income families and their children.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 31, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Speaking to the article?
As with South Coastal, which provides shelter and services for those in need, the Coastal Counties, if legal services, provides legal services, as I stated earlier, for, for those families that can't afford it and elderly.
Thank you. Mr. Gaynor, any discussion? Mr. Gaynor, any indication?
No indication of discussion.
All those who are in favor of Article 31, please raise your green card, signify that you approve. Thank you. Any who are opposed, please raise your red card. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimous in favor.
Article 31 passes. Town clerk, do we have any additional articles before the town?
We are done.
We have no more articles. Yes, give yourselves a round of applause, 'cause you deserve it. This was tough. I will, it, it is entirely in order, and it does not need a second for adjourning town meeting.
So moved.
It's been so moved. All those in favor, please raise your, no, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All done. All done.